And at this time, I will ask Dr. Matt Garrett, instead of our moment of silence, to lead us in a invocation. In memory of National Prayer Day, we just have a National Prayer Day last week, and I would like Dr. Garrett to do an invocation for us. Dr. Garrett's been a friend, a neighbor, and a fellow pastor, and he's the interim pastor of First Baptist Church in town.
Thank you very much, members of the board and administration, and all others present. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Yes, in addition to last week being the National Day of Prayer, today is National Teacher Appreciation Day.
Yes.
And having spent over fifteen years in the classroom, I thought I might begin with a little story in honor of our teachers that are struggling in the classrooms. In elementary school, the teacher called a little boy up front and said to him, "George, if you would go to the map of the world and find for us North America." So little George went over and he studied the map, and he found it, and he said, "Here it is." And the teacher said, "That's correct, George." She then turned to the classroom and said, "Class, who discovered America?" And the whole class said, "George!" Well, the teachers have their hands full as they try to replace ignorance with knowledge and wisdom, and you have your hands full as a board in trying to facilitate that process. And since this is a devotion, I will say, "May God help our teachers, and may God help you to be able to fulfill that task well." So with saying no more, I will read one scripture and then lead you in prayer. Proverbs 1:7, "Respect and awe of the Lord is the foundation of true knowledge." So we do not want to create a school system that either promotes or tries to establish a religious belief, but we also do not want a school system that tries to create a vacuum of faith. And we need to have both of these working together in cooperation. So now I would like to lead in prayer, and I have to say that I will have to pray as a Christian, because that's who I am, but I pray with complete respect for all other beliefs and faiths that are represented in the room and in the schools. I even respect those souls who have decided that they don't think they have a soul. I respect that too. So now, let us pray together. Our Father God, I ask you, Lord, that you would bless the schools of Lee County with good teachers, with good staff, with good administrators, and with a good board. And I ask that you would bless our schools with the sufficient resources and buildings and teaching materials that are needed for the process, and that you would bless our schools with children who are able and eager to learn, and that you would bless them with parents who are willing to support the process. And we pray for safety for all of the children and all of the staff each day. We pray that while the children are learning of the material world, that they will also grow spiritually, and oh God, that they would grow in favor with God and with man. And now bless this board with great wisdom to govern the affairs of the school, and I pray that in this meeting tonight, that there would be a spirit of harmony and a spirit of civility and a spirit of respect. Lord bless this meeting with your presence. And now, Lord, with respect to all, I end this prayer the way I always end my prayers, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Garrett. Thank you very much. For those of us who don't know, Dr. Garrett is also the former president of the community At this time, let's rise to see the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few names for public comment at this time, and we will go through our public comment, but before I do the public comment, I want to recognize the press people. Margaret Murchison, she's here from the radio, and we have Zach Hurner is here from Sanford Herald, don't know if Ms. Sylvia, not Sylvia, Silavia, okay, representing the military children. Thank you all for being here. You all are special guests. At this time, we will be calling our names to come out and speak to us on the public comment. We have Reeve Smith, Mr. Smith, can you come forward? Oh, okay, Mrs. Smith.
Irene.
Irene, okay, I couldn't, it looks like a V to me. Three minutes.
I am Irene Smith. I live at 547 West Weatherspoon Street in Sanford. Dr. Ryan, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board. The WB Wicker School is built on the highest point of land in Sanford. If you stand on the roof of this beautiful Bozart building, you have a panoramic view of our whole community. When WB Wicker and Link Boykin brought this Rosenwald School to Sanford in 1923, they literally put their lives on the line so that black children could receive a good education in Lee County, North Carolina. To this day, we are benefiting from the service of the productive citizens the school produced until it was decommissioned in 1969, following the groundbreaking civil rights legislation passed in the sixties. The school served as an integrated school for a while, and then was left empty and neglected for years. It exists today partly thanks to the fact that Link Boykin built so well that it was too expensive to tear it down. Another visionary, Kate Rumley, director of the Brick Capital Development Corporation, was the guiding spirit in rescuing the school and finding a way to restore it faithfully and respectfully, bringing back both its beauty and its function. For the last two decades, WB Wicker School has served as Central Carolina Community College's campus for adult and continuing education. Now, the halls of the school will echo once again with the laughter and running feet as it is returned to its original purpose, educating the children of our community, thanks to the vision and the courage of the Lee County Board of Education and our Board of Commissioners. The neighborhood has been condemned as unsafe by people who should know better. It is a neighborhood teeming with children who now have to travel considerable distances to get to school. It is a place that needs an elementary school. When it opens in 2018, the school will house a thousand children. WB Wicker School and you, the Board of Education, are symbolic of our better angels. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Linda Rhodes. I live at 602 North Vance Street here in Sanford, and my comments tonight are also about the WB Wicker site. In 1983, a young girl was brutally attacked and raped at the site of the school. The person that committed this heinous crime was well-known to our law enforcement officials. Only words describe that act, senseless, tragic, heartbreaking. In 1996, I was a guest in a Chapel Hill Hotel, less than 500 yards across the street from a fraternity house that burned to the ground, and five young men and women were killed. The fire occurred on commencement, and not only was it commencement, it was Mother's Day. The cause of the fire was a cigarette that someone just casually tossed into a trashcan. Senseless, tragic, and heartbreaking. In 2003, a man with a gun walked onto the CCCC campus, killed a woman, and then committed suicide. Senseless, tragic, and heartbreaking. On the face, that may all seem just like terrible events that have happened over the years in our community, but if you look closer, you'll see a difference. When the tragedy of the murder and suicide occurred at CCCC, there was no discussions of avoiding that area, or if the environment was safe, or if the property values were going to go down. We expanded, we flourished, and continue to do so, just as we should, in spite of that tragedy. The difference in these tragedies is one thing, race. A black man raped a white girl in 1983, and due to that racial component, the contributions that Mr. Wicker and the builder of the school, Mr. Boykin, made to the community are being tarnished. There is no doubt, in the WB Wicker community, there may be people with behavior and legal problems. That's true of every neighborhood in Lee County. I would venture to bet, if we took a poll in this room, I can guarantee, we would find some folks that have had criminal or civil charges filed against them, and in some cases, even sealed or expunged records of their arrest records. If you believe the WB Wicker site is not worthy of being the location of a school, then take a group of young children to that beautiful mural on Horner Boulevard, and you be responsible for explaining to them why we are degrading a school built by those two accomplished black men that are honored by that mural. Thank you.
I appreciate what Sheri Lynn Womack has done in her first six months on this board. She realized that accepting gifts from a vendor and employee of the school district is a violation of state ethics rules and blew the whistle. She saw the approved budget allowed $700 for each BOE member to attend local functions or board training, all training beyond that amount she has paid for herself, not always happened with other members. Sheri studied state education law and realized the local policy of preferred contractors violates state law when the project costs $50,000 or more. In that case, it must go out for competitive bids, such as when hiring the architect for the next school. Sheri has sought copies of the feasibility studies about different sites for new schools, minutes on public hearings, on these sites' cost comparisons for different methods of school construction, and on financing those schools in ways best for taxpayers and the county commissioners who must fund the projects. She didn't get them. Sheri has spent countless hours researching projects, taking training at her own expense, reading avalanche of documents to speed up, get up to speed quickly. She has asked legitimate questions, like which programs are mandated and which are not, so she knows where the budget may be cut legally if full funding is not forthcoming. She was elected to this oversight board. These things were given to her. These things, you may not know that Sheri has nearly completed her coursework for a doctorate in management and decision-making. She knows best practices in decision-making. Sheri has put up with recent malicious attacks about a family problem involving an arrest. Her daughter's college roommate let her in. The security guard helped her carry in the gifts for her daughter. At court, the judge asked, "Who commits breaking and entering to leave gifts?" And the bailiff shouted, "Santa Claus!" The charges against Sheri were dropped, and the Supreme Court of North Carolina expunged the case. Expunged means to erase or strike out, to obliterate completely. All documents related to this incident were ordered destroyed. Sheri demonstrated huge self-control regarding this recent unjust and illegal attack on her character. Obviously, no criminal conviction. Sheri was able to serve as a force to our general headquarters staff and was honorably retired as a lieutenant colonel from the US Army. I applaud Sheri Womack for her courage, her tenacity, her Christian character, and staying focused to do what's best for the education of Lee County children.
I hope we can respect the time that we have, please.
Well, somebody probably know me, I'm a member of the Rotary Club, and a couple weeks ago, I made a video addressing Hoppe Valley PTA. So I'm here to address this PTA, well, board member. The bottom line is, I didn't come here with a script, speak from the heart, retired marine, taught high school, good education in North Carolina. I don't care if you're a Republican, Democrat, or drank tea at the party. If you got a race problem, which some of the board members does, just stop kicking the can down the road and say, "Hey, I got a race problem." Then that way, everything is out clear. It doesn't make sense, every time something come up, in the black community, we got a few people who want to bring in a race. Everybody got a race problem. Like I used to tell the people when I was in the gang standing in the red. I don't care who the president is, Republican, Democrat, or drank tea at the party, or what country you came from, everyone has done something bad to someone in their national, in their nationality. Now, if you think I'm lying, I have a degree in history and government. I have several degrees. You go back and look at history, I don't care what country you come to, everyone has done, every leader has done something bad to some of the population in their country. So the only thing I'm saying is, if you got a race problem, have some more fortitude and just say, "Hey, I don't like black people, I don't like white people." Then that way, everybody know where you stand, and we can still deal with you. You know, the good preacher just got through saying, "Have respect." He said it several times, and that's what we should do. I don't care who you are, I got a good friend who's a Ku Klux Classmate. That's right. But guess what? I know where you, I know where he stands, and he know where I stands. Simple as that. He know what I like, and I know what he like. I don't cross the line, he don't cross the line. So have some more fortitude, and have some family jewels or jewellets, and just say, "You don't like it," and let everybody go by having respect.
Owen Scott, Evan Fox, Mr. Fox.
I guess you can see who I'm supporting. I'm not here to bash anyone. First of all, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Love, and this board, I applaud you for the work that you do, and I really appreciate you, because without you, we would be in trouble. We're so glad to have you here, and I just want to say that I got an education at WB Wicker, and it was a good education, and I would love to see some of my grans or great grans attend WB Wicker School, because I do have some that's in elementary school and whatnot, and I would love to see through one of them say, "Papa, I went to WB Wicker." So let's keep WB Wicker, and let's make it a great school, because when we was there, it was a great school, and I feel that it can, with your leadership, it can continue to be a great school. And we appreciate you for even considering to put a school there, and I just want to say thank you. That's why I'm here tonight to just say thank you for the job that you are doing, and if there's anything that I, as a leadership of the NAACP and this community, that I can do for you, please feel free to call on me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Jan.
My name's Jan Cashant Tatt, and I am an employee for Lee County Schools, and I am here to speak in support of WB Wicker. First of all, I'd like to say that it pleases me to see WB Wicker return into active service for Lee County Schools, much like Greenwood and Deep River and Broadway remained in active service when we consolidated into Lee County High. So I'd like to thank you for that, for returning Wicker into active service. As a property owner in the historic district, there's a lot of buzz being generated. People are excited about having a magnet school nearby, and to add to that excitement is the fact that it's going to be a steam school. My only regret with that is that it's going to be one year too late, so that my daughters will not have the opportunity to attend. As someone who attended WB Wicker in the early eighties, I was attended their fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, I'd just like to say I look forward to returning back to help facilitate any technology needs that they may have, and just, I'm volunteering for that task right now. So if you need me there, I'm there. And again, I'm just here to speak in favor of the school. I am so glad that this is going to happen, and I look forward to serving that as one of my sites, if you need me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. At this time, we'll finish the public comment, and we will move to the mission, and Dr. Smith. We only have six names here. We're not trying to sabotage anyone. Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll continue with the video statement of Lee County's high school system. Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students. Are working now?
No, your mic's off.
Can you hear me?
Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovation, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
I also have the Code of Ethics for the school board members. This is in Policy 2120. It states that "The board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the board must adhere to an accepted Code of Ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should, one, avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the board; avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board; avoid the misuse of public funds; avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts; and avoid making confidential information public. The board hereby accepts the Code of Ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association."
Thank you. At this time, I would love to welcome a motion for the approval of the agenda of 592017.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the agenda of 592017.
Do we have a second?
Second.
The motion is made, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. The next thing we have on our agenda is approval of the minutes of 4:42017 and 4:62017. Love a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve those minutes of 4:42017 and 4:62017.
Second.
We need a second. The motion is made, and we have a second. At this time, I want to ask, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The motion is approved too. So at this time, we will go to the chairman's report. We have so many good things that have happened to our school, like has been said tonight. Last night was a night we celebrated some of our best teachers. We have great teachers in this community, but our best teachers were celebrated last night, and were able to, the system was able to choose one person to be the Teacher of the Year, and she'll be driving around in a nice car and with some check that was given to her last night. So it's a good thing to know that Lee County School is a great school, where you can come, and we can recognize your hard work all the time. So I want to say that that's something that's very special to me, to see our teachers and staff doing very well. We have several of our teachers that were nominated from different schools, but one of them has to be the Teacher of the Year. They are all great teachers, but the one that was Teacher of the Year was another great one. So she'll be Teacher of the Year for the next one year, and she'll be driving a new car around, so if you just see her car, just wave to her. That's our best Teacher of the Year. Also, I want to say something about one of our students here in Lee County. Maybe some of you have read in the, on the news and in the paper about Jamir Smith.
You lost your mic.
One of our student, Jamir Smith, was being recruited and offered admission from all the eight Ivy League schools. And for those ones who say our school is a mediocre school, I want to tell you, Lee County School is no mediocre school. If all the Ivy League school offer a student of Lee County School an admission, we have students in this school that were given admission at Duke. We have had more head scholar from this school system. So I just want to say that the work of our teachers, I want to have, I want to tell you that we're very proud of what the school system is doing, and we know that Jamir Smith's family is very proud of the work that's been done, and I want to say to you that we need all of you to go out and spread the good word about Lee County School System, because our teachers are doing tremendous work. Also, I want to tell us, on Wednesday, we'll be having the graduation for the Caterpillar program that we have together with the community college. Kids will be graduating from their internship from the Caterpillar and CCC and Lee County School Program. Also, I want to also say that we, as, this past week, as some of us board member went to rally to go and take more training. Sometimes people don't know that we have to be trained to do this work. You can't just come and just sit here. You have to learn some things, you have to learn the policy, you have to know the best practices, you have to know what is good and what is not good to raise children. So I just want to say to you that this is some of the things that we're doing. Our staff are working very hard to make sure that our school is one of the best school in the region. So that's the end of my chairman's report. At this time, I will want to jump to the committees.
You skipped the superintendent.
Yes, oh, Andy, he's looking at me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This time, I'd like to ask Dr. Jim Atkinson to come forward to award our Clean School of the Month.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, it's a pleasure and honor to be able to award the Clean School of the Month Award. It's the third time uh, this school year that Greenwood has won that event. I don't, I was trying to look around and see if we had someone from Greenwood here. But I don't believe they're here. I know they're busy.
I think they're at the school cleaning, Jim.
They might be busy. Uh, they did score a hundred, which is a perfect score, so I can't argue it at all. But this is the third time, that's unprecedented for us awarding in this recognition, uh, third time in one school year. And uh, again, the second time that they've uh, had a perfect score of a hundred. And again, I always like to brag on the other schools. We had everyone to score above ninety, which is good. Fifteen schools. We have great custodial staff all over our system and we do appreciate their hard work, their duty, and their dedication. So uh, so again, we want to congratulate them. But uh, we do have, uh, Ms. Petracca was going, I did talk with her last night uh, at the Teacher of the Year banquet. And she did mention that uh, she could not be here. I knew that she would not be here, but I did think that custodians, but they're probably busy. But we have a video feed that uh, is going to come through at this point. So she's going to acknowledge that victory that they've uh, accomplished.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry that I can't be there with you tonight as you honor my custodians once again as the Clean School of the Month winners. Um, they know how I feel about them. I have a feeling you know how I feel about them. And tonight, I've arranged for you to hear the thoughts of some of our students. Enjoy.
Ms. Kearney.
Mr. Collins.
And Ms. Brown.
Ms. Brown and, and Ms. Barker.
Ah, na na.
Mom, Ms. Barker, dude.
Um, you know that guy that goes, that goes to the cafeteria?
He, um, yeah, is he one? Yeah.
Every time we see him, they're usually, they're cleaning or they're getting ready for the next thing that they're gonna clean. They work really hard.
We see them clean the windows. We see them clean the bricks because it has dirty, dirty germs on them. They clean the wall. They clean the floor. And that's all I remember.
We see them cleaning the bathrooms, mopping the hallways, sweeping.
We, we see them cleaning our classrooms.
We see them vacuuming.
We have to help them out by taking our trash cans out of our room every day because they do lots of hard work and we can at least help them a little by doing that.
They do deserve an award because they work, they really work really hard, so they deserve it.
And they clean the bathrooms.
I can say, oh.
And they clean everything in the school.
And the trash.
So if we didn't have a clean school, it would just kind of be like, ew, around here and a lot of people would be getting sick. And you know, it's kind of an honor to win the Clean School Award.
Um, uh, ask her. So we don't have to get, you know, get sick.
If the cafeteria wasn't clean and food wasn't like on the floor, people would slip a lot of.
It's good to have a clean school because like she said, it would, it would, it's an honor to win Clean School of the Year Award. And we wouldn't be able to do it without them. And so we just, we're grateful for you, custodians.
It's important to me because I don't want it to be smelly. I want it to be good for learning. And I want it to be good so we can learn better and learn the seven habits.
Thank you so much, custodians. We are so grateful for you. And we hope to have you work here forever.
Thank you.
We love that you cleaned up the whole school for us.
You guys are really cool. You guys work so hard and it's like amazing how hard you guys work. You guys work all day long and it seems like you guys never get a break. And all the things you have to clean up, it's kind of gross, but you guys can deal with it. But you guys are awesome.
Would you appreciate it?
Thank you.
Are you wearing this on YouTube?
I don't know.
I don't know.
On behalf of Greenwood, thank you.
Very impressed.
If I, uh, point of privilege, if I may. Um, just recently, I had a conversation out, not at Greenwood, uh, but at Edward's School and was talking to one of the administrators there. And it really kind of hit me and, and we recognize the clean school every month and I think that's important. And we do tend to focus on the cleanliness, but what we forget is that our teachers are, I hate to say trapped, but they're, they're caught within their classroom with their set of students. And these custodians that are throughout the building throughout the day, they're the eyes and the ears on campus that, you know, are really, really important. And just having that extra set of oversight and also someone to look up to that's on the corners. And when a child is sick, a custodian's right around the corner, you know? And it's just, it's really important that they be recognized as their role they play so much more than sweeping or mopping or cleaning and so forth. But they are just the eyes and the ears and just that first point of contact often that a student gets. And our bus drivers and our custodians probably just don't get enough of our gratitude, so.
And our maintenance staff.
Yes.
And our maintenance staff.
Yeah. Thank you.
Second accountability update, we're in the uh, home stretch before testing. Second semester for the high schools and uh, end of year for our middle schools and elementary schools. Uh, doing a lot of tutoring and reevaluation of work and data analysis to hit the final ground here running with the end of the year. So everybody's working really hard. Uh, been out, visited several schools today. Uh, conversation with principals and teachers and um, I feel like everybody's putting their best effort forward. And um, as someone said earlier, and, and I think it's really important to note, uh, Teacher Appreciation Day and, and week and our awarding of Teacher of the Year last night, uh, Jordan Chaney uh, from BT Public Elementary School. Um, just uh, a, a wonderful choice to be Teacher of the Year. It was um, a little awe inspiring, inspiring last night to be standing in front of sixteen teachers who sort of represent the best of the profession. And um, uh, we could have brought in uh, lots of more, lot, lots more teachers into this room last night from around this district and for what they do for students every day. And I'd just also like to um, sort of echo what, what uh, Mr. Akonosha said regarding Jamir Smith and his recognition last week. Uh, it, it's sort of that time of the year in a school district and in our schools, particularly our high schools where we have end of the year awards. And I think over the next several weeks, you will see a number of our, of our students who are being sort of highlighted for their academic and athletic accomplishments. And um, for our seniors, it's, it's a, it's a really special time for them because they're coming to the conclusion of a, of a, of sort of one part of their life. And with graduations coming up and all the things that are done to recognize them, uh, I think it's really important that we take the time right now and sort of uh, take note of where they are and recognitions, recognition of our students and all the great things they've done and all the hard work of our employees that they've put in, not only this year, but throughout the careers of our seniors who've been in our system. So just like to say how much we appreciate everybody for what they do. Mr. Akonosha?
Thank you, Dr. Brian. At this time, we will uh, want to go to the committees, committee report. Uh, we'll have uh, Dr. Cobble, Stephen Cobble, uh, he has something to say. Uh, Ms. Livingston is not here tonight, so Dr. Cobble has something that he was going to share with us.
I'll let Mrs. Livingston handle the uh, last uh, CNI meeting when she gets back. The one thing that uh, I was very impressed with though, and I'd like to read this off. So on April the twenty-fourth, I was able to interview Jessica Hamilton and Joanna Perkins about the very extensive literacy programs that they are leading in the middle and senior high schools of Lee County. They were very gracious and more than answered my questions, providing me with a very detailed information concerning the literacy framework, infrastructure, and instructions for Lee County Schools. I was impressed with the extensive background studies that are ongoing as a new, as the new material is implemented and the system they and Dr. Gidry and their team has developed to keep the material pertinent and practical for the teachers and the students. It's obvious that they have grasped the importance of college prep, literature, and writing requirements along with the need to implement reading and writing programs. Especially noted was the uh, Understanding by Design program that's going to all levels. It was made obvious to me that there are two positives working in the Lee County School System. One, the level of expertise of these two school employees was coupled with a sincere desire to serve the students and improve the overall product of the county system. These ladies took, uh, I was expecting a thirty-minute interview. They took two hours and uh, gave me everything that I asked for and more. These are the sort of educational leaders for which you wish in every school system. Two, their employment in this particular area was the result of decisions made by the present management of our school system in Lee County. I think that many parents and students will derive benefits from the enthusiasm of this team for years to come. Thanks to them for all that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. We share the same uh, uh, adoration for, for those uh, people you mentioned and all of our teachers. At this time, we will go to a facility and Technology. We'll ask Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And before I start, I, I would like to echo what uh, Dr. Cobble just went through. Uh, being this is National Teachers Appreciation Day, uh, a big vote of support from this board. Whatever su- success our students enjoy, it happens in the classroom and uh, we are in their debt. Uh, on to uh, the Facilities and Technology Committee, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we met on April the seventeenth. Uh, the express reason for that meeting was uh, to pursue requests for qualifications from six uh, architectural firms. Uh, we interviewed five uh, of those on uh, the uh, seventeenth. Uh, Clark Nixon from Raleigh, LS three P from Raleigh, uh, Smith Sinnet uh, from Raleigh, Hyton Associates from Greenville, and McKissick Association from Winston-Salem. Uh, that was the express uh, purpose of that meeting. Took us uh, the better part of six or eight hours. I found it to be a, a really interesting uh, learning experience. We, we spent six hours with some very talented people who bring a great deal uh, to the table in terms of their architectural ex- expertise. We also met on uh, April the twenty-fourth. Uh, we had a fairly long meeting. First item of business was uh, a discussion on recogni- recognition of, for Coach uh, Charlie Spivey upon his retirement. It was a consensus of the committee to name the Lee County High School field, baseball field press box, the Charles McRae Spivey Junior Press Box. And to name the Lee County High School Training Room, the Henry Steven Womack Training Room. Uh, both of these gentlemen have served Lee County Schools for many years and the committee thought it was uh, very appropriate uh, to recognize them with this naming uh, process. Uh, we were privileged to have uh, Reggie Peace, who is an athletic director here at Lee County High School, and Stephen Ross, who's the principal here, to give us advice on that. And uh, that will be under uh, new business tonight. Uh, we then considered uh, the uh, requests for qualifications for the W, W B Wicker site. And it was unanimous recommendation of the committee to approve Hyton Associates as the architect for the elementary school project at W B Wicker site, subject to the approval of a contract. And uh, this item will also be on the uh, uh, new business for tonight's meeting. Uh, we also discussed the mowing contract with M and W uh, Maintenance LLC. Uh, after discussion, the committee instructed school administration to advertise for bids for the mowing work. Uh, the bids will be presented to the uh, committee at a later consideration. Uh, we also had a discussion about uh, time for the meeting, for the F and T meeting. And it was the feeling of the uh, committee to change our meeting time from uh, five PM to four PM, uh, principally to better serve the con- convenience of the staff members uh, who attend that meeting. And our next meeting will be on May the uh, yeah, the next meeting is Tuesday, May the twenty-third. And that concludes the uh, F and T report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Smith is also the chair of the finance. Uh, we want you to give the report.
Uh, the finance committee made on, uh, met on April the twenty-seventh. Uh, the first item on our uh, agenda was uh, board member compensation and expense. Uh, each year, uh, the board puts limited funds aside for annual board operations. Uh, the funds provide opportunities for individual growth, travel, conference experience, expenses, books, and supplies for board members. Uh, in accordance with, with policy twenty-one thirty, uh, it says, "The board shall establish an annual expenditure amount for out-of-pocket expenses for the coming year." Uh, the remaining balance that occurs in that, uh, accumulates in that fund will be distributed to members at the discretion of the board. Uh, Mrs. Bowen made a recommendation that the expenditure be increased to one thousand from one, seven hundred dollars per board member for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. Uh, however, the funded amount for that committee will remain at twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, we discussed changing the time uh, of the meeting of the finance committee and it was feeling of the committee that we would uh, continue our meetings at five PM. Uh, we had a brief discussion of board expenses, which is in your FYI portion of the budget. And that concluded uh, our April the twenty-seventh meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
I'm not done yet.
We had one more.
And yesterday we met, uh, just to make sure we uh, made some decisions for tonight's meeting. Our first uh, item in the call meeting yesterday on May the eighth, uh, was to consider bids on the workman's compensation bids. As you know, uh, we have workman compensation for all Lee County School employees. And uh, we had an interesting uh, uh, number of applications uh, uh, this year, which is a little unusual. We had uh, three companies bid. Uh, Synergy, who has previously provided our workman's comp, uh, bid was a hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars. Uh, Harrison Company was a hundred and five dollars, uh, a hundred and five thousand dollars, a hundred and ninety-four dollars. Uh, and Surrey Insurance Company was eighty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-one. And obviously, it's a recommend, recommendation of the committee uh, to select uh, Surrey Insurance at eighty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars.
I like finding twenty-seven thousand dollars that we can save.
That's right. Uh, we also uh, received bids for an eight-room modular building. Uh, this basically is to uh, help us comply with a smaller class size uh, at the request of the legislature. Uh, we had uh, four bids, the lowest of which came from Modular Tech. And uh, the price per year uh, offered by Modular Tech was fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Uh, we got a, uh, one from Mod Space for sixty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars. Sustainable Company offered it at eighty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty dol- eighty dollars. And Scotchman uh, bid was ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars. So obviously, uh, our recommendation is with Modular Tech at fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. That will also be on the new business for the evening. And that concludes my report. Finally, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, we will discuss some more of, of that on the new business. At this time, I will call on um, Ms. Bowen uh, for the policy committee.
Mr. Chairman, the policy committee met on the eighteenth of April and had quite a slew of policies on. Uh, through that, we had twenty-one policies to review. Um, we've dug through those and those, many of them will be on for first reading this evening. And then we have our next business meeting. Wait a minute, I got that backwards. We have one policy on for first reading this evening and eighteen are on for second reading this evening. And our next meeting was scheduled for May sixteenth, but that meeting has been canceled. Uh, and we will have our next scheduled meeting on And we will have our next scheduled meeting on June twentieth, unless need rises between now and then. I'm getting a nod from Dr. Aggins, so we're on the same page. We had good discussion over several different policies, and those are on our agenda for this evening.
Thank you. That concludes our report for the Committee Reports. At this time, we want to go to our agenda, our Consent Agenda. I want to ask if there is any discussion on the Consent Agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Consent Agenda be approved as presented.
I second that motion.
Thank you. At this time, if we are all in favor, let's say aye.
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 Thank you. The Consent Agenda is approved. We're going to the unfinished business, the policy reading. Ms. Bowen.
Mr. Chairman, coming from the Policy Committee, we moved that Lee County Board of Education approve the second reading of Policy Twenty-Two Twenty, "The Official School Spokesperson." As you recall, this is a policy that we made a very minor change to that indicated when feasible, that Superintendent let us know prior to any official media engagements and so forth, so that if possible, the Board can attend. And he does that anyway. So the motion is to approve Policy Twenty-Two Twenty, "The Official School Spokesperson."
We need a motion for that?
That is a motion. As it comes from Committee, I'm not certain that it needs a second.
Okay, yes, we don't need a second for it.
No.
At this time, we'll go to the New Business.
You do need a vote on Twenty-Two Twenty, sir.
Oh, final vote, yes. Rushing ahead. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Thank you. At this time, we'll go to the New Business.
And I think I have the first item on that as well.
Yes, what policy reading?
The Policy Committee brings forward, "I moved that the Lee County Board of Education approve the first reading of the following policies. Policy Twelve Hundred, Thirteen Hundred, Thirteen Ten Slash Forty-O Two, Policy Thirteen Twenty Slash Thirty-Five Sixty, Policy Twenty-One Fifteen, Thirty-Four Ten, Thirty-Four Twenty, Thirty-Four Sixty Slash Fifty-One Thirty, Policy Forty-One Twenty-Five, Policy Forty-One Fifty, Forty-One Fifty-Five, Forty-Two Fifty Slash Fifty Seventy-Five Slash Seventy-Three Sixteen, Policy Forty-Seven Hundred, Policy Five Thousand and Eight, Policy Fifty Thirty, Sixty-Three Twenty, Sixty-Four Fifty, and Policy Seventy-Nine Thirty."
Thank you. Do we have a?
Are there any questions about any of these policies? This is the first reading, and so they'll be back before our Board next month.
Back again.
For informational purposes, I would encourage everyone to read, some of these policies are coming out new, Policy Five Thousand and Eight, and there's been some minor revisions to Forty-Two Fifty. I would encourage you to read those. If you have any questions, contact either myself or Ms. Womack, or of course, Dr. Brian, who I'm throwing my name tag at.
Some of these policies, we changed some of our policies because there are changes to the law, state law. So that's the reason why we changed some of our policies, to be able to adjust to what the state wants us to be doing as we operate the school system.
I don't want to dilute the motion that's before you. I do, if you want to go ahead and vote on the motion, there was one of these that I wanted to discuss, though. However you want to do it, if you want to vote and then talk, or talk and then vote.
Do whatever you want to do.
All right. Some of these policies are coming down as new policies from the state, and I feel like one of them in particular, I have heard some feedback from before the policy came into place, and that is Policy Five Thousand and Eight. It's the robo-call law. Basically, the school system uses a lot of robo-calls to announce exigent circumstances, emergency procedures, closings, and that kind of thing. And I was very impressed that the state put down this restriction, that people can opt out of their calls. And from our team looking at it, it's always good when we're ahead of the game. And so they said, "Well, the good news is, we could have written this policy because this is exactly what we've been doing the whole time." Sometimes I get parents that say, "Why do I get calls in triplicate?" I say, "Well, how many kids do you have? That's how many contacts they have in the system." I know, I have three of them, so I get everything in triplicate as well. But I did want to put that out there, that there is a method. If you happen to be on the robo-call list and you want to remove yourself from the robo-call list, it is a possibility to do that. And I know all it takes is one good political season before you get tired of robo-calls. So if that happens to affect you or any of this Board, be aware of that. There is a method, and it's included within that policy.
Okay. All of these policies is on our website, so you can go there.
Absolutely, it is.
You can go there and read these policies. Thank you.
Very good. That's all.
That's all. Thank you.
Yes, I have the motion, but we'll need a second on that.
A second? Who's second? Ms. Womack, just second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. The next we have right now is the current expense and capital outlay for the budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the county appropriation request for the local current expense budget and for the capital outlay budget for admission, submission to the Lee County Board of Commissioners, as well as approve the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget book.
Do we have any discussion?
Yes. Beauty first, go ahead. Aids next.
Just want to note a couple of changes on the capital request. We did some, once we got some information regarding the class size reduction and looking at some things that we thought were maybe a little bit better budgeting from the mobile perspective. We put in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the eight-unit modular for the elementary schools. And then that took away some other funding that we had accounted for for that. And I added in for consideration of the Board, once we get to reconciliation time in October, replacing the baseball lights at Lee County High School. So those are the changes with capital request. I believe that everything else has stayed the same for current expense. And in this budget book, there's a budget message that I've read in the Superintendent, and also sort of itemized things there in here as well, if Ms. Jones wants to speak to that as Finance Officer. Otherwise, Ms. Womack?
Yes. I would just like to make it known that we have discussed the budget. We had two different budget meetings as well, and it's a job of the school Board members here to ensure that the students get the best education for the best tax dollars. Therefore, it's necessary for the members to be able to dig deeper into every program and the activities that produce the best results within our schools. We have to be armed with the relevant knowledge, and the school Board members are better prepared to be able to prioritize the spending on our high-value programs. With that in mind, I had asked during the budget workshop, I submitted four important questions, which were in previous minutes and throughout documentation. Asked for the county manager's guidance and expectations for the capital and operation funding for K-12 system in F-12 through eighteen, anticipated revenues projected by the Superintendent for FY seventeen eighteen, broken down by federal, state, and local funding expectations, asked for the ADM projections by grade level for FM seventeen eighteen and beyond, and most importantly, a cost matrix with line items detailing, showing the state mandated versus non-mandated programs, along with their aggregated costs to the school system, including AIG, ADVID, LEADER and ME, programs such as that. Only one of the four requests was partially answered after exchanging multiple text messages and emails through the workshop. My persistent follow-up request, I even requested an appointment with the auditor. There's a reason that I asked for these questions. We need to know what programs are effective and increase the performance with our children, and which programs, if in fact, our budgeting is limited, because I, my personal belief, and as a Board member, is programs such as art and PE and music are not optional. Those are very valid programs, and I felt as a Board member, we need to know the details in order to be able to make sound decisions before presenting the budget to the County Commissioners.
Ms. Womack, are you making that as a motion? If you want to turn what you just said right now, turn it to motion?
I make a motion, then, that the following questions that I had asked, that I make a motion, those questions need to be answered for the Board members before we present our budget to the County Commissioners.
You need a second. If there is no second, the motion dies.
Before we vote, Mr. Chairman, I would like to add one comment about our budget as it's presented includes a one percent raise for certified and classified staff. Being it's National Teachers Day, I think it's very appropriate that we pass that in honor of our teachers.
Is that a motion?
The motion's on the floor. We need a vote, Mr. Chairman.
We need a second.
I have a second on the budget.
Okay. Second, the budget.
Prior to vote, in terms of discussion, I would be interested if Dr. Brian or Ms. Jones, I know she loves it when I call her name, would like to address some of the, the last time we were here, we were all concerned about House Bill thirteen and what the implications of that would be. And I would like to hear someone kind of address how we have made steps to ensure we're in compliance for the coming year, as well as some of the things that we're looking at should. The concern I addressed yesterday is, we, it looks like we've bridged a gap. We got a one-year reprieve to get this in order, but I also don't want it to be that we just fix this year and hope to kick the can down the road. And so I felt that there was some good explanation given as to how and why we have attacked the problem and at the same time, not overextended our capital budget. Some would say, "Well, if you know you got to have thirty-nine classrooms next year, it looks like you'd better buy thirty-nine mobile units." And I thought they explained quite well as to why we can do this in a piecemeal pattern and not sap every bit of our capital budget.
If Ms. Jones is okay with it, I'll just take that. Ms. Jones, if you want to jump in at any time. This budget that we're presenting, have presented to the Board and outlined, puts us in compliance with what the, what the House and Governor signed into law last week and with the class size initiative. We also understand that in the, in the next year, that there will be other changes that will be coming. There is discussion at state level certainly about revenue streams for teachers and specialty areas, which are being discussed, and also some discussions about capacity issues as well. So I believe there's certainly more time for us as we go forward to take that into consideration and what changes might be coming a year from now. Certainly, we're very grateful to the legislature for addressing the issue and for everybody signing off on that, including the Governor. And we will be watching the issue very closely as we head into next year and the things we'll need to put in place to make sure we're in compliance with that. Like you said, Ms. Bowen, I think from the discussion yesterday, we want to make sure that, that we continue to keep our facilities upgraded and maintain them. At the same time, we'll be looking forward ahead to what we need to do in reference to compliance with future, the future of the class size reduction.
I had had the opportunity to speak to both the Superintendent of DPI, Mark Johnson, as well as Senator Ron Rabin recently, and had a very frank discussion about this. And I said, "You know, I don't think anybody in the room or anybody at the table would say that small class sizes are a bad thing." I think the argument was how quickly we had to make this happen, what money that was available. And I'd like to think there was some very small role I played, because the next week, we got a year's extension, so I'm going to take credit for that.
That's all right.
Yeah, the whole state was saying it, but nonetheless, it did feel like a year. But I do say that from my perspective of their conversations, that small class sizes are definitely the goal, and that they're trying to mandate that in the best way they know how. And I think that's something that we need to consider from this Board, is to continue to do what we can, when we can, to bring those class sizes down. And I felt like the eight-room modular, I can't even say modular tonight, modular unit at Tramway was going to free up space and give us at least a net gain on space. It would meet the six classrooms required, as well as give us two additional that are in the hopper, so to speak, so that if we need them, they're available. If our kindergarten class is larger than we anticipate, we have space available. It's always nice to know we have extra, at least for now. So I was very pleased with that. Felt like that we were at least making, making good and wise decisions at this point.
I just have a little comment on that. I will just say that that's one of the reasons why we need a new elementary school. We need two. We're running out of space for modular homes to be put on campuses. So how many are we going to be putting? We're purchasing one, their prices depreciate as they stay in there. But when we build a school, the school will be there for fifty years, for seventy years, as much as we maintain them. So that's the reason why we need more schools. Everyone on this table believes in small classes, but that's sometimes too, when we have those things, those mandates that come from the legislators, we have to pay for it locally. You have to pay for the, they might supply us with a teacher, but the Commissioners have to look for ways to buy us the modular homes. So that's where we would rather have our school system build, finish Wicker School. Once we finish Wicker School, we'll be ready for another one. We really need two schools at this time. So that's something that's very important. So at this time, I will just, since we have a motion, I will just ask that to, since we have a motion and a second on the motion, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. The next thing we'll have is the...
Mr. Chairman, I think you probably want any opposed on that vote.
That would be just one. He's used to that.
Ms. Womack oppose that? So we have five one, or six one?
Five one.
Five one, okay.
Dr. Livingston is not here tonight.
She's not here tonight? Okay, five one. The next one, what we have on item three on the New Business is rescind Heights Associate Contract Renovation and Wicker School.
Mr. Chairman, I moved that the March thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, Lee County Board of Education action on a proposed Height Associates PC contract be reconsidered, rescinded, and canceled.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion is approved. Item number four.
Mr. Chairman, I moved that the Lee County Board of Education approve Height Associates PC as the architect for the elementary school project at the WB Wicker Site, and that the proposed contract dated May ninth, two thousand seventeen, be accepted and approved, and the Superintendent is hereby authorized to execute and contract on behalf of the Lee County Board of Education.
We need a second.
I have a point of clarification before it's approved.
On his motion?
Yes.
Okay.
During the selection of the architect, they were given a list of qualifications and the questions that went along with those as well. And my point of clarification is, is there a matrix that's available for the Board members showing the difference between each one with each qualification question that you were asking?
They each presented a, both in person and a written request for qualifications that is available, yes.
And too, as the Vice Chair of that Committee, I'd just like to say that I thought my support in this was unanimous decision among the FNT Committee for lots of reasons, for the reasons that Height has done in the past for our work here and the amount of money he's saved us in our other two past school renovations and being built. And to me, Height stood up above the rest and provided everything we requested for. So that's just me, the one, my support behind Height and this project at this time.
I also want to say some, thank you, Mr. Kelly. I also want to say something that when we talk about the Committee, we're not just talking about just the two of them. We have all the staff, the facility and maintenance staff, who are part of the Committee. So that was the consensus. It came from the Committee. That was the consensus of the Committee that they, that Mr. Height be approved. Of course, he has a good reputation here in the community, so that's the consensus of the Committee. So at this time, we have, do we have a second?
Second.
And certainly, a big part of that decision, Mr. Chairman, was the fact that the last two... two projects that Mr. Height has designed for Lee County Schools were finished ahead of schedule and under budget. The San Lee Middle School, incidentally, was finished $900,000 under budget. So, he really has a good track record for Lee County School System.
And the same thing for Lee Senior, too.
And speaking to the concerns of one of our other board members, Dr. Kobel, about safety and security with it comes to Mr. Height. His design is the one that designed storm shelters throughout the whole building by his platform raising the mechanicals above the rest of the school.
Storm shelter.
The storm shelter. So, you know, he's the only architect out of the six that actually has the design in his plans for that, so.
Can I assume that the contract putting forth is the exact same scope of work that we had a couple of months ago, and no changes were made at the recommendation of any of the other architects who were present?
Actually, the architects were requested not to present anything on WB Wicker's project. This was only qualifications for prior work that they have done. Does that answer your question?
Yes and no, because I know some of the conversation at the presentations were over the cost feasibility of the auditorium renovation, and several of the architects recommended against that to a substantial cost savings. I understand from the community perspective that there is a lot of desire to renovate that building. I just wondered if there had been any discussion after the decision of how we might want to reconsider the design.
That would be a project of whatever, the committee that's appointed to address those very issues with the architect.
Okay.
None of those decisions have been made.
The contract tonight, then, is for design services, notwithstanding the current rendering. The current rendering is just for...
As a sketch.
Is a sketch without any commitment so far as to scope of work.
Correct.
And Height and Associates, to my understanding, does not do in-house engineering. They will sub that out.
Well, they do with all six firms. They have engineers on staff.
But they're sub engineers.
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, is, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kelly, but I think all six firms brought their engineers with them.
And some of them shared the same firm. There's a couple of engineers that stayed throughout the entire day.
Who subcontracted to three different architects.
You're getting one design. You just...
Right.
Got it, got it.
And that's how engineers, that's how architects and engineer work together. They always have... Sometimes, some of them have in-house engineers, some don't. So, what happened is that they always have somebody, they subcontract the structural to, electrical to, and mechanical. So, we have a motion on the floor so that we can...
Well, before I... That's part of the reason I'm trying to clarify before I vote. The contract reading is they'll have a 7%. Their price is 7% of the yet unknown price of the building, and the recommendation from several of the architects would be to not do that auditorium. And so, that's what I'm saying, is at this point, we are not committed to a budget number. That will be yet to be decided between us and the architect through the building process.
And the county commissioners, when they provide...
Understood.
That is correct.
When we get the loan. But 7% is the standard.
It's a little high, but knowing the scope of the size of the job, it's okay.
I just say, whether it's a million, whether it's two million, 7%. All the architects say 7% is the standard for their practice.
They did have the benefit that that number was already out there, too. In the construction industry, that number's a little high.
Yeah, but we're not talking about a price, fixed price. Now, we're talking about the standard in the industry. 7% is the standard. So, whatever they're doing, we don't... We want to move forward. What we have to vote on at this time.
All I'm trying to clarify is that we are not yet locked into a price with Height and Associates of... At one point, the discussion was about $1.7 million. That was based upon their estimation of the cost of construction. Should the cost of construction be reduced in the scope, then so would our contract price to them, is what I'm trying to get at.
Yes, yeah.
The 7% of the yet-to-be-decided number.
Yes, yes.
So, we have not, okay.
We're saying that whatever the price is, I'm just telling you, just advising you that that's what I believe the price is. So, whatever the amount that we're going down with, it's going to be...
Understood. Once we get to building, then we get to price. Got it.
And Mark, if you'd just appoint a personal privilege real quick. I would like to explain the reason I asked for the qualification questions. It's not just what schools you have done before, but I actually went and sat for the long late hours watching the architects come out. And you would have some come out, and they would show you the paperwork and do it. Well, actually, I had one that come out and did a virtual classroom, and I thought that was pretty awesome, how they do the media and do things in the center. So, we had an option to see the various things. So, all the questions that were asked here, we have to be, as a board, accountable for. If another architect comes up to us and says, "Well, why did you pick that architect?" I can't say the four people who were sitting in that room said that's a committee that did it as well. As a board, we are the ones that's going to make that decision tonight, and that's why I had asked for these particular questions. And they do talk about a lot of things, from energy optimization to things with helping children with technology. Even with Wicker School, if you can imagine the school, they don't have the library anymore. They have a beautiful media center. These are the things that, when you go through these lists, and hopefully, this is available to the public as well, that shows exactly the things that they were looking for during that procedural. And that's, and quite frankly, that was what I was looking for.
And they are available to the public. As soon as we opened them up as a committee, they became available to the public that day.
Yes.
Matter of fact, Zach was in the room.
Okay.
He should have had him in the paper.
Okay. We want to vote now.
Call the questions.
Since we want to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All in favor, Kelly? The motion is approved. Number five.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve naming the Lee County High School baseball field press box the Charles McGrace Spivey Press Box.
I'd like to provide the second for that.
Okay. The motion is seconded. Do we have any question on that? All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, I would like to read the portion of Policy 9300 that speaks to naming facilities, and this paragraph reads as follows. "A facility may be named to honor a living or deceased individual whose history, good name, and life accomplishments are adjudged worthy and beyond repute, and whose reputation is considered by the Board of Education to reflect honorably upon the student, staff, school district, and community. The name may be that of a prominent citizen, educator, philanthropic group, or entity to be honored or memorialized by the donor." So, Policy 9300 clearly gives us the authority to name this facility after Coach Spivey, who has such a stellar record in coaching baseball in our county.
And not only that, as a teacher, as a student, as a teacher as well.
Okay. We have the motion, and we... Motion is seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The motion is approved. Number six.
You're getting tired of me, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not, because I have a lot to do.
Why don't you... Mr. Kelly, why don't you make this motion?
I make a motion that we name the Lee County High School Training Room the Henry Steven Womack Training Room in honor of Mr. Womack, who was a longtime educator and sports trainer here at Lee County High School, who I had the privilege as well, serving here with.
The motion is... We have a motion. We need a second.
Second.
The motion is seconded. All in favor, let's say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The motion is approved. These are two individuals that have really done a lot of work for our school system, and I feel the honor that we're giving to them. I think each of them have over 30, 30-some years of working for Lee County Schools, and I feel like it's a great honor for them tonight and their family, and for the school that these people have put that kind of time, so, to serve the children of Lee County. The next thing we have right now is number seven on the items.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education award the 2017-2018 Workers' Compensation Bid to Suri Insurance.
We need a second.
Yes.
We have a motion, and we have a second. If we have no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The motion is approved, if there is no opposition. Number eight.
I'm getting there. Computer's taking some merry time. I move that Lee County Board of Education award the eight-classroom modular building bid to lease for 60 months to Modular Technologies Incorporated in the amount of $58,248 yearly.
Second.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? No opposition. The motion is approved. Mr. Supertending, can you explain to us why we're listening? Just tell us the reason why it's been, that we're not buying, we just listen.
The leasing element for that gives us a little bit more economical choice for us, given what we're doing, and gives us a little bit more freedom as we move forward with things, and hopefully, with the building of a new school, we will alleviate some of those issues as well.
So that we don't own it.
That's correct.
We want to be able to get rid of mobile units, not have a collection.
Okay. Okay. That's just what I want to know. Number nine. The Chatham County CCC trustee.
Mr. Akonesh, I might defer here to Mr. Love, but each of the three boards, according to law, from Chatham, Harnett, and Lee County, have to vote for trustee appointments. And at this point, it's Chatham County's trustee appointment to make, but we have to work with the other two boards for a vote for their nominee. Mr. Love, you want to add anything to that?
It's a joint, the selection of trustees jointly by the Board of Education, and I think Chatham has selected...
Their candidate.
Yeah, so basically, we just approve it.
Affirm their selection.
Yes.
The only thing I like to add is, at this point, in conjunction with Policy 2120, I will abstain from this vote due to concentration interest of me working at Central Carolina Community College. So, in your vote count, I will be abstaining.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I thought it might be good for the public's benefit if the little blurb that we have within the agenda just be read out for explanatory purposes.
Okay.
Okay. It says CCC, there's too many Cs, Triple C trustee, Robert Logan's term expires on June 30, 2017. Mr. Logan was appointed jointly by the Boards of Education of Chatham, Harnett, and Lee, but holds this office from Chatham County. The Chatham County Board of Education took action on the CCC trustee appointment at their meeting yesterday and unanimously reappointed Mr. Logan. Therefore, I move that the Lee County Board of Education reappoint Robert Logan as a trustee of Central Carolina Community College for a term beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2021.
All in favor? Okay, second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is approved. We need a motion to go into closed session, Mr. Kelly.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, and not a public record under North Carolina General Statute, Section 143, 318,11A1.
Thank you. We're in closed session.
Second. Motion to resume open session.
Second.
Have a second.
Let's vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next thing we have is the personnel report.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the Human Resources Report as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion is approved. The contract.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move that Lee County Board of Education approve the following contracts, the one-year contracts, the two-year contracts, and the four-year contracts for administrators as presented.
Second, we need a second.
Second.
All in favor of it?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion time is approved. At this time, we...
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Before we... Could I bring up a point? Mr. Chairman, I believe we need a... We'd prefer to have another meeting to approve teacher contracts at the end of May. Just makes the process a lot easier. That would mean a regular board meeting that we then go into closed session to approve those contracts and then come back out. And would like to see that before the end of May. It's just, it's easier on our employees to do that, and Human Resources, Mr. Conway has requested that we consider that. And we're proposing the 25th of May, which I believe is a Thursday.
There's a finance committee meeting on the schedule right now for the 25th of May.
Yes, ma'am. We're proposing to do it at 5:30.
Here?
At the site of the finance meeting.
10:04.
In the Heinz Building.
I want all of you to look at your schedule before we walk with you.
That will... There will be a conflict for me. I'm attending a graduation up in New York.
I expect a birthday cake. It's my birthday.
Be careful what you ask for, Doc.
If we're asking, that mine's this week, so you can bring it on.
Just do it in the middle.
I'll be in Jones County, but you should still have an F4 form.
Well, we don't have Dr. Livingston to guarantee a quorum. Dr. Kobel's out. Mr. Kelly?
On the 25th, I'm out.
Correct.
I can be there on the 25th.
I can be there. Okay, so that's four, maybe five. So, roll with it.
I make a motion that the County Board of Education have a called meeting on May 25 at 5:00.
5:30.
5:30.
At the Heinz Education Building.
At the Heinz Education Building, in Assembly Room.
All in favor of it?
Aye.
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 As long as they know we won't be there.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Now move we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.